I'd like to call a meeting to order and would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So, first?
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. I have two proclamations tonight. City of Council Bluffs Iowa Office of the Mayor proclamation. Whereas Congress of the United States of America has designated the first Monday after January fifteenth of each year as a national holiday in recognition of the birth of Dr. Martin Luther King. And whereas the state of Iowa designates the third Monday of January of each year as Dr. Martin Luther King Day, or Junior Day. And whereas it is essential for Americans to act upon the principles of racial equality and nonviolent social change that were espoused by Dr. King and reaffirm their commitment to peace, unity, and racial harmony. And whereas it is appropriate for all of us to review our own attitudes and to reaffirm the American ideals of freedom, justice, and opportunity for all. And whereas this is when people of all races, religions, and classes, and stations in life should put aside their differences and join in an effort to bring peace to our world. And whereas in 1994, Congress passed the King Holiday and Service Act directing the King Center and the Corporation for National and Community Service to carry out a day of service reflecting Dr. King's life and teachings. And finally, whereas it is appropriate that we honor the late civil rights leader and Nobel Prize recipient and recognize Dr. King's legacy for understanding and peace among all people. Now therefore I, Mayor Matthew Walsh, City of Council Bluffs, does hereby proclaim January nineteenth, 2015, as Martin Luther King Junior Day. And the period of January nineteenth through January twenty-fourth, 2015, as Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Week. In the City of Council Bluffs, Iowa, and urge citizens of Council Bluffs to commemorate the life and principles of Dr. King by honoring the ideals and spirit of his life with the, in witness whereof, and heretofore set my hand, cause the official seal of the City of Council Bluffs, Iowa to be affixed. The second one is in conjunction with actually last Friday, but it is something that I think that we can do throughout the year. And especially in light of what's happened with our honor and respect for law enforcement throughout the country in recent times. City of Council Bluffs, Iowa Office proclamation of the mayor. Whereas FBI National Academy Associates, Inc., and partnering organizations have united to support law enforcement officers nationwide to promote a national law enforcement appreciation day. And whereas each day, seven hundred and eighty thousand police officers across our country and one hundred and thirteen police officers locally pin their badge on and go to work knowing that they may face extremely dangerous situations. What the public doesn't see is the toll law enforcement takes to keep our community safe. On average, between a hundred and five and two hundred and three officers die in the line of duty each year. Fifty thousand officers are assaulted in the line of duty each year. And fourteen thousand officers are injured in the line of duty each year. And whereas being a law enforcement officer truly is an impossible job. You must be professional, courteous, caring, and yet be ready to protect the public at all times. You must be prepared to make life and death decisions in moments' notice. You take an amazing amount of abuse at times, but you have to view this abuse as just part of the job. You do not have the liberty to express your emotions during many situations. And whereas law enforcement officers play such an integral part in our society, without law enforcement officers, chaos would reign. Have you ever thought what you would do if you were in trouble, either through a car accident, a home invasion, and assault, and you did not have someone to call for help? No matter how much abuse law enforcement takes, they continue to do their job and they do it well. They are the guardians of our way of life and they deserve our support. Whereas each day, we turn to our officers and civilians of the Council Bluffs Police Department when crisis arises and we have, when we have no one else to turn to, and they are always there for us. Whereas this is an opportunity and a time to show our law enforcement officer that we, the citizens of Council Bluffs, recognize the difficult and sometimes impossible career they have chosen in public service to us all. And finally, whereas for all these reasons and so much more, we would like to say thank you for everything our officers and civilian employees in our police department do every day to help make our city a safe place to live. Therefore, I, Matthew J. Walsh, Mayor of the City of Council Bluffs, does hereby proclaim last January, or last Friday, January ninth, 2015, as National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day in the City of Council Bluffs, Iowa. And in so doing, our citizens can show their support for law enforcement in a number of ways, such as when you see a police officer, thank that police officer for their service. Send a card of support to our police department. Share a positive story about positive law enforcement experience on social media. Or ask children in our community to write letters in support of law enforcement. In witness thereof, I've heretofore set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of Council Bluffs, Iowa to be affixed the twelfth day of January in the year 2015. And thank you, ma'am. All right, we have public hearings. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution fifteen dash oh seven, approving a voluntary annexation of seventeen point eight oh acres, more or less lying south and east of the current city limits in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section five dash seventy-four dash forty-three, Potawatomi County, Iowa. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests of this matter? Or I guess we're going to change the format, so I'm reading off a script, but anyone who wishes to speak in regards to this issue tonight. So whether you're for or against, you're welcome to approach and speak to the council. If you do, please give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, what's the council's pleasure?
Wish it to approve.
Any discussion?
We had some good discussion at the study session this afternoon involving city staff. And we were joined by Scott Belt from the County Board of Supervisors. And there's some discussion made concerning the infrastructure that will be involved with this substantial new housing subdivision. And although the subject of annexation only involves a very small amount of property near the intersection of Greenview and Longview Loop, still there was some justifiable concern and some good feedback provided about, about the ability of the roads and other infrastructure to sustain the amount of traffic and, and activity that will be taking place there in the long run. I'm not entirely sure I, I'm comfortable with, with all the answers. I, I kind of share some of the concerns by the county board. However, I, I think that, that this development going forward is, is in the long term the best interest of, of the community and even the county. So, so I will support the resolution.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. This is the time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution fifteen dash oh eight, determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or combination thereof of such areas necessary in the interest of public health, safety, and/or welfare of the residents of the city. Designating such area inappropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting Amendment Number Two to the Marketplace Urban Renewal Plan. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Does anyone wish to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any discussion?
Again, at the study session, we, we had some discussion as to this point. And it's pointed out that there are currently three, three portions of that development that are unoccupied. So, and they've been unoccupied since the time that the original structures were built. So that naturally raised the question in my mind. So if we build, if we build additional structures, additional store space in there, is there, is there a known demand for this, for this office space? Or for this retail space? And unfortunately, the, the answer I thought was, was pretty noncommittal, which tells me that there's a, a good possibility that if constructed, this, this venue would remain vacant. And while I understand that this is hypothetically a neutral, revenue neutral decision for, for the city, I'm just not sure, given the amount of vacant space that we currently have at the Mall of the Beluffs and in other portions around the city, I'm not sure how good an idea it is to be building more vacant retail space. So, so for that reason, I'm going to have to withhold support of this. I just don't think it's the, the right message at this time.
Well, I'm going to be in support of this and, and you know, this goes back quite a ways. This was Marketplace, which is down at Twenty-Fourth. And that project started going up, J.C. Penney's moved out there, it was going pretty well. And then we had the economic downturn. The company, which I think at the time was Magnum, had that property. And they were also involved in doing a couple of other large projects in Omaha at the same time. And they just couldn't make a go of it when the economy turned. So this company, Red Legacy, that has come in to take this project over, has a really good track record. They're the ones that did Shadow Lake out in Papillion. They've done a lot. They'll be able to do this project. However, they are coming in trying to pick up the pieces. So the bays that have been empty there have been empty from the beginning. Red hasn't been able to move forward until they get some of this taken care of. They have some financing that they had to work out in a very difficult financing climate. So this project will sit as it is if this company doesn't take this over and do it. And I think for the benefit of the residents of Council Bluffs, we want to see a project completed down there. And they can definitely do it. So I'm definitely going to support it. I know that they have lots already sold to some different, I think we all saw Chick-fil-A at some point will come in down there. So they definitely have some businesses on the line, but they have to get moving forward with their financing. So I will be supporting it.
And the TIF, they don't earn any TIF dollars if no new development occurs. So it's, it's a no lose situation from the city's perspective.
Well, except that we are taking on additional TIF debt. So I, I'm concerned that there's, there's a finite amount of that debt that the, that the city can, can accumulate. And so I'm concerned that as we go forward with development on West Broadway and other key development things that we need to do, that this may complicate those later decisions.
Agree to disagree? Any other discussion by the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Nay.
This is time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Ordinance sixty-two twenty-four, amending chapter, or I'm sorry, amending Title Seventeen, Housing by Amending Chapter Seventeen, as amended and continued from the December fifteenth, 2014 meeting. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, fifteen emails have been received through the city clerk's office thus far.
And is there anyone who wishes to address the council, either for or against? And if you do, please state your name and, and address for the record. Just step to the...
Don Angrath, Ten Stubblefield Drive. A couple of questions. You guys do know that some of the things that you say in here that the landlord is responsible for, by Iowa law, we can assign to the tenant? And that they would therefore be responsible for it rather than us? I just wanted to know if you were aware of that.
I assume you're referencing the refuse pickup?
Yeah, one is like the garbage cans. We can assign that to them. The reason for that, like for example, a long time ago when I started this, I bought all new garbage cans, but all the addresses on them, they lasted about two months and they disappeared. So from then on, they don't tend to lose their own garbage cans. So assign that. Same thing with the smoke alarms. With the fire chief that we had several years ago, he recommended that we make the tenant be responsible for the batteries because they tend to take them out and put them in the toys and everything else. So I mean, and here you say we're responsible for it, but that can be assigned to them also. So I just wanted to make sure. Along with that comment on the smoke alarms, you have in here that they are to report to the landlord within seventy-two hours of a non-functioning smoke alarm. Now, non-functioning could be they took the battery out and put it in their toys. I would like to suggest we change that to a malfunctioning. That way it's the unit itself that doesn't work, even if you put a new battery into it. So I'd like to offer that suggestion. Another question. In here, it says that the building official can use a spot inspection to find out if there are problems when he has suspicions that there are. I mean, we had that same situation in the old law. I guess the main question that ties that in is you guys have claimed that there are certain landlords that tend to cause more problems than other ones. What are, is this new program going to do that helps along those lines to go after the ones that are giving you the problems as opposed to simply inspecting everybody?
Don't look at me, I'm not...
Any response or...
I think that, you know, we've said through this entire process, that question has been asked repeatedly about going after the bad ones. The problem is that you're assuming that we know who the bad ones are. Without ever, you know, you can have something that looks fine on the outside and you don't know what's inside. So until the inspections are done, there's not a list of good landlords and bad landlords. There's no way to know. And, you know, we've said from the beginning that it has to be across the board. You can't target. I think one of the emails we got was from an organization that actually filed suit against Omaha for not evenly doing this. You know, we, it has to, the law affects all of them. It can't just affect who we perceive to be the bad ones because how do we know who those bad ones are without an inspection? The smoke alarm, I wish had been brought up at the ad hoc meeting. This is the first, I haven't gotten an email on it, it didn't come up prior.
It takes a long time to read every bit of this.
Yeah, if that didn't come up prior, I certainly would have been open to looking at that. However, we did have, we do have the caveat in there for tenant responsibility, that that would still fall under. So if it's not functioning because they took the batteries out, then they're still ultimately responsible. We made sure that we had tenant responsible.
That's true. I guess what I was looking at is that we didn't want to necessarily be called down every time their battery goes dead or they've used the battery for something else. You know, put a new battery in, then if it doesn't work, yes, we'll come down and change them.
Well, and I would assume you as a landlord would tell them that, hey, I'll come down, but you better make sure the batteries are in there. I don't know that it requires an additional change to the ordinance since we've tried to do our very best to make sure there were tenant responsibilities. I think as a landlord, you can just say, try the batteries. If that doesn't work, then I'll come down. I don't know that we can address every little thing that could come up.
Well, yeah, I guess if you change it to malfunction rather than non-functioning, that would basically do it.
Yeah, but malfunctioning assumes it's functioning wrong. I mean, what if it's not functioning at all? Because then I can have somebody else say, well, non-functioning, malfunctioning. I just think if there's a problem with the smoke alarm and they call you and you say, try the batteries first, I don't know that that has to be written into the law, but if, if it's a big deal.
Well, I, if I may, the, the current law holds you responsible for anything wrong with the smoke detector whatsoever, whether it's a battery, whether it's broken. If it's not working...
Unless we assign it to them for the battery.
Well, you can, as a matter of contract, but there's certain things as a matter of law that in essence, they might indemnify you, but you can't shift your, you can't make the state a party to your, bound by your contract. I appreciate there's certain things in state law where special exceptions have been granted, like assigned garbage bills. But I'm not aware of any that allows a landlord to assign any and all duties he or she or it may have to the tenant and the city would be bound by it. If you've got one, I'd love to know because...
No, I'm not binding the city. I'm just saying that contractually, anything that doesn't infringe upon their rights, if two parties agree to it, that's part of the contract.
Well, that's, that's what I mean. The city is not a, a party to that contract. So even if you and the tenant agree contractually to something, doesn't bind the city by it because we're not a part of that deal.
No, no, I guess I wasn't asking the city to be bound by it. I just wanted you to be aware.
Oh, I appreciate that.
If we assign it to them, then we expect them to replace the batteries, for example, and not have to run down there every time.
Indeed, but you know, this change, what it does is again, currently you're responsible for everything, which isn't fair. This causes the tenant to be responsible. You know, they're the ones living there.
Sure, and I appreciate those changes you've done.
You know, and the, who are the people that are going to complain if the tenant's taking them out repeatedly? The landlords. So unless the check on this, the concern, and I appreciate the concern of overzealous enforcement is, if the landlord doesn't report it, it's not going to be a violation that we know of because it's not a violation. If, what this will do however, is when the regular inspection comes in and sees the smoke detector not working, it's no longer going to automatically be your problem because the person living there now has a responsibility to keep it up. Whether, if you take that exception out, suddenly if they've taken the battery out to play a toy, well, if it were malfunctioning, it's their fault, it's the liabilities on them. But they took the battery out. If they're not liable for that because you've taken that out of the law, then you are. Which is, seems like a result, you, you might want to think that one through.
I'm not asking you to take that out of the law. I just asked you to change non-functioning to malfunction.
But, but if, if it makes the tenant responsible for malfunctioning if they take the battery out, that's not working at all. And then the landlord would be responsible because we wouldn't have changed that portion of the law.
Okay.
So in other words, the only, the, the check on this, the person who would be reporting a problem with this would be the landlord. And that's what people have been asking for, is an ability, if a tenant's constantly taking these things out, an ability for you to have recourse to not be liable for it, which is, this is what that grants. And you're the trigger, that is, you are the one who would report it. If we come in and inspect it, well, the tenant's now responsible for it. So in both those cases, I, I understand your concern, but I believe the law addresses it.
Well, I guess, you know, if we were down there every day to check this whole alarm to see whether they've taken the battery out, maybe. But if we assign them the responsibility of the battery, they take it out and we're not down there for several months, how do we know?
Well, actually you don't, well, you can do whatever you want in signing, but under this law, the tenant would be liable in the first instance. That is, right now, you're liable. And if you have an agreement, well, that's an agreement between the two of you where they'd have to pay you back under the agreement. But this means you're not liable to begin with, so you don't have to be paid back because you never have to pay it in the first place. That seems like a better deal for you.
And if they take the batteries out, they're going to be held responsible.
Yeah, I mean, actually, that's against state law too, that they take the batteries out, regardless of the city.
Indeed, it, it, but this takes, removes the responsibility or the liability of you when they do it, which is a major concession and a very reasonable one to what landlords have asked for.
But by us assigning that to them as their responsibility, also tends to take that out of our back pocket too.
As long as they can pay you back when you pay it. At this time, you won't even have to pay it at all. That's a much better deal.
Okay. I guess just to follow up, where you were talking about the bad landlord. When you started this whole procedure, you passed around pictures of what you claimed were bad landlords. And that was the reason why you had to go with this particular ordinance change. So obviously you knew what you considered bad landlords and...
Well, those were properties we had actually had access to. You know, you know, we don't have access to the other properties, you don't know. You know, and that's the whole thing, is that people have to understand, there isn't a list. We don't have a city list of good landlords and bad landlords.
No, I understand that.
So I don't know how you would do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jackie Thompson. I live at three oh nine South Eighth Street. I'll make it quick so we can move on. The, we are for the, the changes of the ordinance. And the ordinance as currently written is not working. It needs to be changed. My thanks to everybody on the city council that's working to address this. And I understand careful thought was giving to, given to change the ordinance that will work for those landlords doing a good job. We don't want to change that, but to encourage the landlords of problem rentals to make them safe. And I, I strongly feel we can all work together in harmony to make our city better and to improve the situation. And it needs to be addressed at this time because the ordinance as written is not working. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Jackie's husband. My name is Walter L. Thompson. I live at three oh nine South Eighth. I'm for the, you know, the ordinance and getting things going the way they should go. I mean, there, I've been all around the country and this is one of the first cities I've seen that was, that I lived in that was self-inspected. It was like one old gentleman told me one time, he said, restaurants used to be self-inspected until everybody got sick. And the thing is, is there, there's so many good landlords in Council Bluffs. I mean, the majority of them. And I know they protect their property. And, and they, and, and to me, it's just a, a plus to have it away from everybody else and have it professionally inspected. And I, I can say right now that I appreciate all the hard work that the council does on things like this. This is why I elected you. And the mayor has done a wonderful job. And I think if I had a proclamation, I'd proclaim, you guys did a great job and God bless you. But the thing is, you've always got to stay on, on, on board with your having the courage to stand up and I don't care if there's a hundred and fifty people in here yelling at you and badgering you and everything, you still have to have that down in your gut that you have to do what's right for the city. And I, I feel this is right for the city, the whole, everybody. So anyway, that, that being said, I'll let you go. Thank you.
I'm Barry Cleveland, fourteen thirty-five McPherson Avenue, Council Bluffs. I'm here to represent the Council Bluffs Chamber as the chairman. We had two or three meetings, I guess three meetings, and deliberated this extensively amongst our board. We had a number of questions, they were all answered to our satisfaction. And we passed the following resolution, which I'd like to read. Resolution number one zero one one two one five, be it resolved by the Council Bluffs Area Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors that the Council Bluffs Area Chamber of Commerce supports a rental inspection program with continued work by the city and landlords to evaluate a fair, affordable, and equitable process for both the landlord and the tenant with public health, safety, and quality of life as a primary concern. The chamber supports quality housing options and a high quality of life as part of its mission to attract, retain, and grow quality jobs and investment in the region in improving the brand, image, and perceptions of Council Bluffs and the surrounding region. The board recognizes the importance of quality housing alternatives towards residents, encourages the city to closely monitor and measure the effectiveness of the rental inspection program and guard against any inequities in the system. Although a small cost to landlords and ultimately tenants, the chamber recognizes our past work in convincing our state leaders to lower property taxes on commercial... in convincing our state leaders to lower property taxes on commercial properties, including significantly reducing property taxes on rental properties to match residential rates over the next ten years. Thank you.
Tim Wickman, nine oh six Spruce Street, three fifteen North Thirty-Sixth, and one twenty-two Wilters Lodge. I just want you to know that I am in, I am in the, um, good landlord category. Um, I've had two rentals, one since two thousand and eight, one since two thousand and six, um, inspect them manually, have complied with the current, current ordinance, the way it sits. I think it's unfortunate that, um, we have some who decided not to comply with the, the existing ordinance, and the city chose not to enforce that. However, um, I understand through this ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, that both of my properties were built in the fifties. So, if they were built under the existing code in the fifties, they will pass inspection with no major work required. Is that correct?
As long as you're not doing a major, like addition, and it's not about to fall over or catch fire, is, is in regular English, yes.
Okay, good. In the ordinance, uh, I didn't print the whole thing, but it's on page ten, it says, "Building official shall keep a list of the registered rental properties and a copy of which is to remain on file in the office of the building official." Is, is that going to be accessible to the public?
Yes.
Why is that?
So if you're looking to rent a place, you can know whether it's been registered because you might, you know, when you're coming into a town, i- if somebody's not taking the, the relatively small step of registering, that would cause me to wonder, and I've lived in apartments in my life, and caused me to think, well, gosh, are they, are they keeping the wiring up, are they? Plus, it'll also help know which, you know, you'll, you know, we'll be able to know where their apartments and how many, and right now, it's anyone's guess. It's really hard when you apply for federal grants or when we, when we do various planning. We don't know how many people are in some areas. There are a lot more than we think, even legally, many times, and that makes it really difficult all around. So for those reasons, for me, that's why I...
Have you considered, um, if that list got into the hands of, let's just say, somebody that want to know where their rental properties were, so they can watch and find out if they're vacant? Have you considered that?
Well, sir, it's like, um, every property's listed by the, by the assessor, and so to that degree, there's, there's, there's some risk, no matter what we do. For example, all of our addresses are public knowledge, too, and we don't, we don't make them secret because you should know we're residents and where we are. Does that make us slightly less safe? I suppose technically, I don't think it does. In reality, we're a very safe community, but it's public. It's, it's...
I think, I think...
Where you live is public.
I think making that list public for anybody who wants to come in and get a copy of it puts those rental properties in jeopardy of burglary, thieves, that kind of thing. So do what you wish. The last thing, um, what is the process for obtaining my consent to inspect one of my properties?
Do you mean specific, you mean as, in theory, as a whole, or do you mean a specific inspection on a specific day of a property?
That's correct.
A specific property? You will be under this, under current practice, you, uh, are informed of the time and place of the inspection, and there is quite a bit of reasonable leeway given. They're not done at night, some folks wanted us to do them outside of the normal business day, and quite frankly, to keep the cost down so that the fee wouldn't be even higher. Plus, it is a business, so just like every other business, generally happens during the business day. But, um, you will be told of the inspection, but it doesn't, in the current law, here's the problem with it, it doesn't say that you have that right. We just kind of do it. So it's, it's out of grace. So if we stop doing it tomorrow, the current law doesn't require us to do that. This law expressly puts in that you will get required notice. Now, it doesn't say X number of days, and the reason we didn't do that is because when the, the building inspector comes up with something, let me pick a number, let's say he says seven days, and he finds that eight days would work better. We wanted him to have that flexibility to do that, but he's required to tell you of that change rather than coming to us. If we put that number in the ordinance, it'd have to go through three readings, it would take months for every change that could be beneficial to you. And there are a certain amount of things we don't want to tie the hands of the people doing it from day to day. And of course, it's our responsibility to oversee those things, and I don't, I don't expect this at all, but if, if for some reason we were picking, like, you got two hours notice, well, then you better believe we would do something about it. But I, I don't see that happening.
Okay, I didn't see that in, in the ordinance anywhere, Nate, where that says it's going to provide...
It, it does, uh...
Specific date and time of the inspection?
It does, Anne.
Uh, Mr. Wickman, if I may say, I actually put that, you get the credit for that order, that, uh, section being included because I hadn't thought of it, and you were the one who suggested it to me, and I think it's a very good idea.
It's seventeen point oh nine point oh three oh, number three, on page ten.
It'll be in green if you, if you have a color.
But it, but it does not, again, it does not identify how many hours, how many days, just that you will be notified.
Tim, do you have the most current version, which you may not? I do, I do.
It's on page ten?
Yeah.
I do.
Page ten.
I just want to be notified of the date and time of the inspection so I can attend.
Yeah, that's, that's, I, I realize, it's in legalese, as laws have to be, unfortunately, but it, um, right now, it takes existing practice, which we could change tomorrow, the building inspector, if he just wanted to. Now he's required to give that to you, so this is an improvement. It gives you that surety.
Yeah, it says you'll be notified in advance, um, and a copy of the notification process is going to be on file in the office. You'll be notified in advance, and that was written in here, due to your email, so it's a good thing.
Okay.
You had a very good idea. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Gary Fisher. Uh, my address, home address is thirty-six oh six Lafayette, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm general legal counsel to Family Housing Advisory Services, which is a nonprofit company that does business here in Council Bluffs, and we have an office, uh, at ten South Fourth Street in the old Bennett Building. We served about two hundred families last year in this community. Many of the families that contact us have difficulty with the landlord, some kind of conflict. Uh, we're a comprehensive housing counseling agency. We do many things for people from homebuyer education to homelessness prevention and negotiation assistance with people that have conflicts with their landlords. I, I'm here to support the ordinance in, in general and say, I think it's a great, uh, idea and a great step towards comprehensive code enforcement. All the research shows that this type of registration and comprehensive code enforcement is the most effective at bringing properties into compliance with minimum housing codes. Minimum housing codes are a critical part of assuring that there's safe and affordable housing available to families. Um, and without minimum housing codes, I think we would not have the stock that we do have because code enforcement winds up focusing most on the oldest property in a community. You find that a great deal of this enforcement activity is concentrated in parts of the city that are the oldest, and also perhaps, um, at least in the case of many communities, property that's occupied by people that are of low income, uh, have poor access to legal counsel or resources, um, who may not understand some of the duties that they have under this ordinance as is currently written. Uh, but, but the idea is that this type of enforcement is important, and it's a good first step. Uh, it doesn't come as a surprise to you, I'm sure, because after reviewing your ordinance, I can see that it, it really reflects some of the better codes across the state of Iowa, that there are many codes across the state of Iowa, that there are many towns and cities in the state of Iowa that have such a code enforcement system in place that's been operating for a number of years. And while I couldn't find any comprehensive research or documentation of the effectiveness of these codes, I did speak with the president of the Iowa Association of Building Code Officials and, uh, conduct several interviews with, uh, building code officials that are operating similar programs in cities in Iowa, and I can tell you that universally, people are satisfied with this. It results in many fewer complaints of housing code violations, and the census that it produces a much higher degree of compliance with minimum housing codes. I think all of those are positives. I would caution, I'm not sure, uh, uh, what the meaning of this is, but in your ordinance, uh, you have a fee in your fee schedule, um, at seventeen point oh nine point oh two oh, at subsection D, that imposes a fifty dollar late fee. Uh, it's, the language is a little ambiguous about what the purpose of that fee is, but the statute in Iowa authorized and required, uh, this type of approach to building code enforcement limits late fees to twenty-five dollars plus interest. Um, and so there's at least some kind of facial concern about whether or not that fifty dollar late fee in that subsection of your fee schedule may run afoul of the statutory provision, so I'm a little bit concerned about that. This is the only caution that I really had about the ordinance as a whole.
Would you mind, sir, telling, giving me a side of the statutory language in the Iowa code that you're referring to?
Um, the Iowa code, yes. Thirty, three sixty-four dot seventeen, subsection five, which states that cities may establish reasonable fees for inspection and enforcement procedures. A city may charge the owner of housing a late payment penalty of twenty-five dollars and may add interest of up to one and one-half percent per month if a fee imposed under the subsection is not paid within thirty days of the date it's levied, essentially. So that's the, that's the section that I'm referring to. Did you get the section of the, of your fee schedule that I referred to? Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, and I'm not sure to which part of our or, proposed ordinance that you're referring. I, I didn't catch the reference.
I'm actually referring to a separate proposed fee schedule, and I think it's part of the ordinance.
Oh, oh, no, it's not, that's not in front of us today, and it's really confusing. Uh, that, that will come in front of us, but that's very helpful information to know that.
Okay. You may want to, I mean, you may want to have your legal counsel review that, I'm just not sure.
Yeah, no, we're very appreciative of that.
The combo of these two things is going to cause a problem for you.
Yeah, we, I, I was worried that I'd miss something. We haven't come to that one yet, but thank you for putting me onto that.
Okay. If you have nothing further, I'd be happy to answer any questions about what I said. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jean Edwards, one one five East Twenty-Ninth Avenue, and I'm a landlord. Um, I, I know the amount of work that's gone into this, and there's been a ton of improvements from what we could have had, you know, two or three months ago when this started, and I appreciate all of that. And I appreciate that there will be a list of registered rentals in the office here because a lot of times when I'm processing an application, they give me an address, they give me a phone number of supposedly their landlord with maybe a cellphone, and I do the research I can on potco.org and things, and I know that they've given me false names before. So having a list, and sometimes somebody might only own one rental in town, and I don't know the, the names, even if they are in the landlord organization, and so that's, that's going to be helpful when I process an application. Then I, I just want to point out, um, two things that, in the current ordinance, will affect people that buy or sell their rental property mid-year. There's going to be a fee, and there's going to be a registration. And the way the current ordinance is written, if I buy a property mid-year from another landlord, and it's been registered under that landlord's name, I will have thirty days to register it with, into my name, which is fine, and I'll also have thirty days to pay my fee for that year, even if it's mid-year and that landlord already paid the fee. Now, I did that once a few years ago. I bought a, we bought a nine-unit building, and it was already registered by the previous owner, and I came in and I registered it into our name, but I didn't have to pay the fee because you guys already had the fee. So that's a, a concern of people, yeah?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, I, I don't want to interrupt you, but I'd be glad to address that. Um, that particular provision, again, one of them that we don't change that talks about a fee, that, that was in an ordinance from nineteen ninety-seven, off the top of my head, I think that's right. We're not changing that, there, so there is no change, and I'm glad you mentioned that because that allows us to get it into the record. When it says you must register, to keep it in as close to regular English as possible, we could have really lawyered it up and divided, giving information, and, let's talk about annually, the, the normal course, December for the next year for annual. We could have said, "You have to give information, and you have to pay a fee." We call that jointly registration. Now, when it talks later about how when you transfer mid-year, you need to do your, I believe it's quote, "updated registration," unquote, I can tell you that there is no change in intent from current, that current law from ninety-seven. You won't pay again, it'll stay the same.
So I'm looking at two different paragraphs.
Yes.
Seventeen point oh nine point oh seven oh.
Uh-huh.
Section B is about the fees, and seventeen point oh nine point oh two oh, section F, is about registration.
And we haven't changed anything on that, so what's been happening when you've been transferring properties would continue to happen, uh, but not all properties that are transferred were already rentals. So, and that was, what Nate said, is a good chance for us to go on the record, that that's not the intent, is to collect two fees.
Good.
Um, that hasn't been happening in the past, and wouldn't, it hasn't been changed to make that happen.
Well, that's good. I'm glad I asked, so you could say it to me.
Thank you, that gives us a chance to make sure, that's clear in the record. No, you won't have to, that doesn't change.
And thank you for, for changing it so it looks like we'll be paying once a year instead of once every two years, so, thank you. That's all.
Ron Tekep, fifty-six Lakewood Villa. And I'm here tonight representing the Council Bluffs Growth Alliance. Uh, this matter was discussed at our last board meeting, and the board voted to, uh, support this resolution. The Growth Alliance believes that the community of the size of Council Bluffs needs to formalize an active rental inspection program. We understand this program is generally to address public health and safety, and we're in favor of these, of these inspections that deal with these issues. Additionally, our group is concerned about the quality of lives and living issues, uh, and believe the inspection program falls in this category. Uh, we understand that the resolution will add city staff and will raise fees on rental properties. We also understand this concern of rental property owners, but do believe this is acting in the citizens' best interest throughout the city of Council Bluffs. Thank you.
I'd like to say, my name's Cristo Fatiño. I'm currently living over here at five oh five South Sixth Street, and I may be new to the region, but I want to admit one thing. This one gentleman here voluntarily requested for an inspection, maybe one of the better landlords, but be careful that would refer to as slum lords because they will automatically allow their property to depreciate and not even worry about. Because as one gentleman mentioned, as far as when it comes to residential safety, it's not just the batteries and the smoke detectors, as is the outdated electrical and natural gas. Which is going to cause a fire first? That battery or the smoke detector outdated electrical? And usually, when those landlords don't maintain their properties on the outside, it's usually on the inside that you can tell that they're not maintaining them either. I've had to live on properties across this country where I've literally had to live with a hard hat in the place and stabilize the structures myself because landlords wouldn't keep them up. And a lot of us across this country have had to do that and had to move out for our safety. So please be real careful about the landlords that y'all allow into your cities because they allow them to depreciate, it could affect the safety of Council Bluffs. Because those low, low-income housing like that sometimes will also draw alcoholics and drug addicts, which could endanger your town, and I know y'all don't want that. So y'all might want to crack down on those slum lords a little more frequently, probably like twice a year, because if you give them too much leeway, they will run with it. They will run with it, so y'all don't want to do that for safety precaution. Consider that for the residential safety of the tenants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Walsh, members of City Council. My name is Jean Ekel. I am with the Apartment Association of Greater Omaha in Lincoln, um, a office at eleven eleven North One Hundred and Second Court, Omaha, Nebraska. Uh, the Apartment Association of Greater Omaha in Lincoln is an affiliate of the National Apartment Association, and we currently have ten apartment communities in Council Bluffs as members, I can kiss, consists of currently nine hundred and eighty-seven apartment units, and I believe five more apartment communities will be joining us shortly, um, because they need a representation in matters like this. Our members have brought our attention, uh, this ordinance of number six, two two four, Councilman Watson, I'm going to, uh, it's kind of a global part here. I'm going to speak to the proposed fee increase, um, and to the annual inspection, if you bear with me on that, because I think it is a global issue here. Uh, the Apartment Association has, you know, it, our, our issues are pretty much two-fold. First, the proposed increase of the rental registration will have a disparate impact on racial and ethnic minorities who are likely to rent in Council Bluffs and thereby violating the Fair Housing Act. Uh, by increasing the cost of doing business for landlords, the ordinance has the unintended potential to reduce the supply of affordable rental housing in the city. Additionally, such an increase in a registration fee will increase rents and potentially put apartment communities in Council Bluffs at a disadvantage in comparison to apartment communities in Omaha where no regis, no registration fee is currently required. communities in Omaha where no regist, no registration fee is currently required. Second, the proposed annual inspection on rental housing and the increase in rental registration fee is a disproportionate impact on rental properties that receive government program funding, such as section eight and low-income housing tax credits. Currently, owners of rental housing that receive government funding have their rental housing inspected annually by various government agencies and inspectors, and we do have represent, representatives of property management companies here tonight that can speak to that issue. Moreover, some owners have their own managers inspect their rental housing in addition to the inspections performed by the government agencies. These current inspections leave some residents that feel that their privacy is intruded upon. The Apartment Association feels that any additional inspections by a city inspector on rental housing receiving government funding will further intrude on that tenant's privacy. With regard to the increase in rental registration fee, the Apartment Association is of the opinion that an increase cannot be passed down on residents in rental housing receiving government program funding due to income restrictions. Therefore, the proposed increase in the rental registration fee will reduce the funds that a property owner has budgeted for for maintenance repair in their rental properties. This result will be in conflict with the objective of the proposed ordinance. Again, the Apartment Association proposes that ordinance number six two two four be opposed or postponed so all parties affected by the ordinance can explore ways the city can inspect housing that will treat all property owners in a nondiscriminatory manner and avoid adversely impacting affordable housing in Council Plus. Now, what we propose is that any rental properties that have passed an annual inspection by government agencies due to receipt of government funding by exempt, be exempt from the annual city inspection if they can prove it. In addition, we propose that if a rental registration fee is gonna be continued, that a scheduled fee is be implemented whereby the registration fee is reduced where the rental property has more rolling units. For example, an apartment committee with 200 apartment units will pay a lower registration fee per unit than an apartment committee with 100 apartment units, so you have a sliding scale. We certainly support going after property owners that are not taking up, not, not taking care of their properties. We want that. But if you're looking at the multifamily housing industry, their employees are better educated, better trained, they have maintenance techs that are onsite usually that are taking care of the properties. And so, kinda looking at a, at a different perspective versus someone who has a single-family house and is putting in a for rent, so, you know, I'll answer any questions you may have at this time, if not, but we, we are here to work with you, not, not against you, but those are concerns.
Just a couple of things. One, the schedule of fees that is proposed does reduce the amount on larger complexes per unit, where it would be $70 biannually or $35 a year for a single family. On the multifamily units, it would be $34 per, it'd be $50 and then $34 per unit, so it already did address that. I did have one question. So, you're a membership organization, is that correct?
That's correct.
If I wanted to join that, what would it cost to join that association?
Well, I have it with me, but it's in my briefcase, but it, it is a sliding scale, so we go by how many units. So, there, the, the property is gonna be assessed one fee and then per units, but it's dollars per unit.
So-
Like, it could be $3 per unit.
$3 per unit?
So, something like that. That's what we're looking at.
Per year?
Yes.
Okay, so you, do you understand that what we're proposing would increase the cost to that unit by a dollar sixty-nine a year for, or a month for this type of, of inspection program? You know, there's a cost to doing business, and to join your association, there's a cost to the landlord to do that that probably gets passed on to the tenant, too. So, I think that, you know, keeping everything in perspective, it's not a tremendous amount of money. We worked very hard to get that dollar amount down. The original proposal was 50. We're down to 35. We've cut every single thing we can to get that program down to a reasonable dollar amount, but it's gonna cost money to do it. So, I just wanted to point that out, that it's not, it's a buck sixty-nine a unit. They're already paying $15 per unit, per year, so it's not a tremendous amount more money. I believe that postponing for, to spend more time on it, there's been a lot of time spent. I mean, I think you're coming in tonight, but we've been working on this for months with the landlords, with committee meetings, so, you know, I, I don't know that there's anything else your association would bring that we haven't already worked very closely with the landlords to try to address.
I, I understand that, although, again, I, I'm gonna reiterate, number one, I think it does affect affordable housing, so i- i- if a group does wanna fight that, they will under the Fair Housing Act. Number two, if you are a, a apartment community that is part of the section eight or low, you're taking tax credits, you are, you, you're capped out on what you can charge a tenant, and you cannot pass that on to the tenant at some point. At that point, it's coming out of the, the property owner's pocket. So, it isn't that they can just pass it on, and I know that's, that's been the understanding of some of the members of, of the City Council, but that necessarily doesn't always take place. So, just keep that in mind, and there are people here that can better address that tonight, so I'll defer that question to them.
And we did discuss it at study session about this. This one is a hard one, because I've probably got just as many people that are landlords on one side of that issue as on the other, because you're, now you're holding these landlords to two different standards. You've got the ones that don't rent section eight, they're gonna be held to these standards, the ones that do are held to these. And as far as the additional inspections go, just in my perspective, this would be a mandatory inspection. Section eight isn't a mandatory program. You can choose to rent section eight or not. You know, the benefit to renting section eight is one, you're assisting that, the lower-income families, that's a great reason to do it, and it's guaranteed payment of your rent. So, you know, that's a program that, that addition, that to me is the additional inspection. The, the city inspection's the primary one. If section eight, if you decide to rent section eight, you've made a conscious choice to do that, that's the additional inspection that the tenants have to go through. I, I don't think that we inspect for the same things. We've went through that with a fine-tooth comb, looking at their inspection sheet compared to what we do. I, I don't think that they should be exempted. I think that everybody should be held to the same standard. It's not really fair to say, you know, landlord, you don't do section eight, you've gotta be held to this standard, but you do so. That's, that's a vehicle to receive payment for rent. The purpose for it is not the same thing as what we're doing.
I, I would like to briefly address a few of your remarks, sir. I don't believe tenants will be aggrieved by a dollar sixty-nine a month, and if they believe differently, of course, they would have standing to, to dispute it under the Fair Housing Act. I wouldn't have standing because I'm not paying it, and neither, you know, anyone not paying it wouldn't have standing, and so, I'd, I'd be curious to hear from tenants who would be the ones actually bringing those suits, and I haven't heard any on that side. The other things are, if we treat section eight properties where the landlord is receiving guaranteed payment from the federal government in exchange for the quality of life, the housing quality standards, and so, and all of those requirements, if we, as a matter of a local, under our police power, the public health, safety, and welfare, exempt a, we are treating two similar groups differently, and so, I believe that any disparate impact or any equal protection concerns would be implicated if we follow your suggestion as opposed to if we do not. And the other thing I'd like, two other, two more points. The, the average inspection fee of the 10 largest cities in Iowa, and we're the seventh largest, there are quite a few of us right in the middle of the pack, but we're number seven, is $56.50 off the top of my head. It's 50, mid-50-something, I believe it's 56.50, and that's a number I have based on 2013 research, so I suspect it surely hasn't gone down. Ours is 35. So, I'm, I'm quite comfortable under Iowa law that that's not going to be seen as excessive. The other thing is I would note, of, of the largest cities in any vicinity to us, namely Des Moines or Omaha, neither of them exempt section eight. And I particularly look, even though Omaha's right next door, of course, it's in a different state, obviously, so I look to Des Moines, and I can find no cases where anyone has been successful in arguing that, that treating section eight differently, or excuse me, not treating section eight differently violates any provision.
Well, we have a 10-minute time limit, and we've taken some of your 10 minutes. If you wanna wrap up, we'll give you a couple more.
Well, I, I just point out, Councilman Watson, Omaha doesn't have a mandatory inspection, so it, you're, you're comparing apples and oranges on there.
Doesn't have today, but they're working on one right now.
Well, I-
After that fire in South Omaha where-
My understanding is that that fire was caused by other means than, than code violations, so.
Well, a lot of the, to be fair, and I, I won't take too much of your time, but to be fair, a lot of the reasons why there weren't code violations is because a lot of the things that we make illegal in Iowa, for whatever reason Omaha doesn't. Like, for example, not putting smoke detectors in your rentals, Iowa requires that. It looks like, if, if I understand my colleagues across the river, Omaha will shortly, based on the death of this-
Currently, it's my understanding that the, the International Building Code and the, it does require, in fact, and we've already worked on legislation that we are supporting mandatory detectors for carbon monoxide, so.
Do you think the tenant ought to be responsible for maintaining them during the tenancy?
That's, that's always the way it's been, it's my understanding.
Not in Council Bluffs, this reform does that.
At least, it is in, in Nebraska.
I understand.
So, I, I appreciate your time.
I'm sorry, I won't take anymore of your time.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Bob Dean, I'm president of Selden Company. My home address is 14520 Harvey Oaks Avenue in Omaha, Nebraska. Appreciate you guys putting this together. I wanted to talk for a minute about our company and about the folks that we represent, the folks we work with in Council Bluffs, the renters, the folks that rent homes, but also talk a little bit about the property owners do the right thing in managing their properties, most of which I would guess are probably here tonight. I would, I would guess the folks that you're after are not people that are in, in the room here this evening. We manage about 1,300 units of rental housing in the city of Council Bluffs, we're proud to do that. We've done that since the 1950s. We have, we, I believe we pay a little over $1.2 million in property taxes into the, into this, into, into some relationship with the city of Council Bluffs on an annual basis. We have been paying, I think, $15 per unit per year under this self-certification program since the origin of, of the program, and I don't think that a single time that we have heard anything but "thank you for your check." We haven't had a inspector come out and, and look at our property. I don't think we've gotten anything out of those dollars we've spent, and so, what I'm curious about is where those dollars have gone to this point, and, and why another $2 per unit, which I think actually will put this program to, I think, somewhere between $450 and $500,000 a year that it'll be generating. Where, where the, where the benefit to us will, will come from that. I think the vast majority of property owners in Council Bluffs are quite good property owners. We completely support, fully support going after those that are, that don't do the right thing, that don't do a good job, that don't maintain their properties correctly. I think it's been acknowledged by this group as much as others that there's little in this ordinance that actually will force those folks to be compliant with local city ordinance. I, I find it hard to imagine that'll actually happen. I also, I just fundamentally don't think the math works. I think it's, it's unlikely that hiring two or three inspectors are gonna have any chance of getting out to the number of dwellings that, rental dwellings that you've got in the city and be able to conduct a, a, a degree of an inspection that's laid out in the inspection protocol that I've seen. I think that will take a very long time to do that on any, on any number of, on any number of, on any number of apartment homes. And then the final thing I would say is I've not gotten a great answer to this yet. If we really want this to be fair, why are we treating people who happen to rent their home differently from those that own their homes? Why do we feel like renters somehow should be subjected to a different standard than folks who own? I don't fundamentally understand that. I understand that, you know, there are, there are circumstances that happen, there's certainly been tragedies that have happened in multifamily dwellings, but without question, I think it could be demonstrated that there are equally as many of those that have occurred in single-family dwellings that actually are owned by somebody, and so, I think the idea of, of exempting folks simply because of how they happen to live in their particular home is a mistake. Happy to answer any questions that folks have.
Do you, does Selden have rental properties all over the state of Iowa?
We've got rental properties in seven states, all over the state of Iowa, yes.
So, all over the state of Iowa, so Iowa City, Des Moines?
We have rental housing in Des Moines, yes.
Okay, so in Des Moines, you're paying this fee on your units, they're being inspected, and you're being held to the standard in Des Moines?
There is an inspection protocol in Des Moines. The one thing I would say is that the market in Council Bluffs doesn't bear the same revenue out of the apartments that we get that the city of, that the, that the rental market in Des Moines does.
And why do you think that is? I'm, I have heard that numerous times, and I am curious, and especially with a company like Selden, you would definitely have that information. Why do you think Council Plus doesn't hold as high, especially since we're so close to a really large metropolitan area with a lot of jobs? Any idea?
There's just different economies, different jobs, different cost of living, different tax bases, there's hundreds of reasons for that.
So, Selden, I just wanna be clear, Selden does have to pay these inspection fees in the other cities in Iowa that has implemented, and-
There is an occasion where that happens, yes. There, there are, I think, incidentally, I think the state of Iowa is the only state we manage in out of the seven that actually has this particular kind of protocol. I will say, in some of the other communities in Iowa that have this, they do things like, like they don't do it every single year.
And we won't be, it's every three years.
So, but, so, but are you gonna, what are you gonna do with the fees?
It's a registration fee, not an inspection fee.
It's not an inspection fee, it's a registration fee, and, you know, we were gonna do that registration fee every two years, but the landlords asked us, please don't do that, make it yearly, and do half, do 35 a year instead of 70 every two years, so we did make that part of that, so, yeah.
It would seem to me that if you're, if you're, if you're a good property owner, you're doing the right thing, you're maintaining your property, you don't have multiple resident complaints, that there ought to be some, and there ought to be some ability to be exempted from some of this process. The sole focus here should not be to penalize the, the vast majority of good property owners and good renters frankly, at the expense of a few that don't. I'm quite confident that if you guys needed some help finding a list of the bad property owners, that the folks in this room could help you find it.
And do you think there'd be any basis in the law that would allow us to take their word for who a bad landlord is and only enforce it on them?
No, ma'am, there's, ma'am, there's a lot of things here tonight, I've, I've thought, that I thought you're treating folks who happen to rent their home much differently than those that happen to own their home.
You know, actually, currently, the, the city of Omaha is in the process of settling a lawsuit for doing just exactly what you're proposing the, the city do, targeting a certain class of landlords.
Brought by the Landlord Association, if I'm not mistaken, they are a party, if I'm not, I believe they're a party.
Yeah, so, and so, our advocacy in the city of Omaha would be the same as our advocacy here. If you wanna inspect people's homes, you oughta do it for everybody and not just for a handful.
Well, I appreciate that. I do take particularly your points, sir, about there potentially not being enough inspectors. Can I sit here and say with 100% confidence? Well, probably not of anything, but 90% confidence that that will be enough? No. But the thing is, is the original proposal at $50 that came from staff, we, we worked with them and, and told them, you know what, cut it down to what the minimum reasonably that you think has a reasonable chance of working. We could've gone the alternative, I suppose, let me pick an extreme example, and say $100 per unit. I can pretty much guarantee that would more than cover it with enough inspectors, but we had to balance it, so a lot, there were far more folks saying, don't raise the registration fee an awful lot, as opposed to, I want you to raise it, in fact, I can't say anyone told me, raise the fee as high as you think so that there won't be any problems. And some folks have told us that they may tell us, I told you so. Well, I, I suppose you have to pick which way it is, whether you're gonna have your cake or eat it. Either we make it too high, or we, we try it at a lower amount and hope it works. And we've, we've erred on the side of, erred on the side of going with a lower number because we think that's a fairer place to start, and, and one more thing I'd, I'd just like to mention, this is a regulation of landlords, not tenants. It's, it's about providing the minimum quality standards, which I know Selden does, I wanna be very clear, I know that. But unfortunately, not every landlord is as diligent as Selden. You're a very good company. Not everybody does that, and right now, we have to take people on the word, and if you're not gonna follow those minimum standards, it's not much more than lie about it, and that's our concern, and, you know, we, we saw the lawsuit in Omaha about trying to treat folks differently, and I agree with that, that you can't do that. And so, for an extra dollar sixty-nine a month, from Selden's perspective, you will, to the extent somebody's market plan is to squeeze as much money out of housing where folks who have- folks who have a lot of limited options and don't have someplace else to go and whatever the law says, if they object and they can't be retaliated against, we know how the real world sometimes works. For all of that to do that, to pay for a program to do that, is a very relatively small price to pay. And from Selden's perspective, if somebody's business model is to follow squeeze it, squeeze it, squeeze it, we have a few who do that with a disproportionate amount of property, and then walk away, and then the taxpayers are paying eight to sixteen thousand apiece to knock the house down. Those folks are suddenly gonna find their business model probably doesn't work. And so you will have an increased supply of people coming to safe places. So, I'm not so sure this is necessarily against the interests of Selden. And I'm quite certain it's in the interests of folks in that position. But I appreciate, we disagree on that.
We definitely do. Anybody else have questions? I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy?
I'll just take a couple of minutes. Bob did a good job. You know, I, it does bother me a lot.
I'm sorry. I'm Randy Leno. I'm with Selden Company CEO. I live at 16306 Valley Street
in Omaha, Nebraska. Been involved in in a number of projects in Council Bluffs and worked with the city on a lot of lot of issues. It does bother me, the fee. I think the issue with the disparate impact that the Department Association brought up is about the fact that your categories, certain people who live in certain housing, you're treating them differently than you are everybody else who lives in housing in Council Bluffs. So, I do think you have a chance of a lawsuit. I don't know who will file it. I'm not gonna file it. But I do think that that possibility always exists when you file an ordinance. And I don't care if you're in Omaha or Council Bluffs where it is. I've worked in a lot of communities. As we said, we're in a number of states. We typically haven't had to deal with this and pay these kind of fees. We do pay higher taxes. Here in Council Bluffs, quite a bit higher than we do across the river, which is a challenge. The rent rates aren't as high. And so it is difficult. I also am bothered by the fact that we've got Section A properties. North Avenue Tower up the street here, we got a sprinkled high-rise there that, you know, is about as safe as you can get. And, you know, we're gonna pay a lot of fees for that, just to have somebody walk through it. We have to keep it sprinkled. All of our elderly's are sprinkled all the way across Iowa. We think it's the right thing to do for safety. And so you spend the extra money to do that, and then you find yourself having to pay extra fees to the city so somebody can walk through it. It is kind of frustrating from our standpoint. So, I just want to get that on the record. Thank you. I'll answer questions if anybody has any.
Are you interested, we had changed a provision in current law that requires bedroom windows to open in buildings that such as yours who have other procedures. Now, we may not enforce it that way, but that's how it's written. So, I see a lot of perplexed looks. And we're trying very hard under the under the change in government to have law actually say what it means. And right now, if we don't pass this, technically, which an absurd result, all those towers, those windows all have to be replaced. And there are a lot, that's one of the two dozen changes.
You'll have a lawsuit.
I appreciate that. That's why there are two dozen changes in here that I appreciate there's one or two that a lot of landlords don't like, but there are over two dozen.
But we can't do it. We don't want people jumping out our windows anyway. So, we'll probably sprinkle the buildings.
No, I'm with you on that. I'm just saying there's over two dozen things in there that you might like. And I that's, I just point out probably the most extreme example.
Right. And I understand. And I'm not trying to be flip. I'm just saying that there's some things we can't do, and we don't want people doing anyway for the safety, I think.
I agree with you. I agree with you.
My question would be, since you have so many properties in so many different states and rental markets and whatnot, you have a good cross-section to gauge what works in a particular locality or even a market, based upon the fact that you also have properties over in Omaha, and given the fact that you've been so well-regarded by by the city, I believe, in both jurisdictions. As a business individual, how would you see this impacting the business decisions of Selden as to whether or not they would undertake further investment in Council Bluffs versus the Omaha market?
Yeah, we won't make the decision based on inspection process. I'm not gonna sit here and say that. That would be not smart on our part. But it is something that is kind of frustrating. It's frustrating because the fact we have to pay the extra fee and we're we're doing it the right way anyway, or at least we certainly try to. Nothing's ever guaranteed, but you do the very best you can. We hire good people and and we spend money on life safety. But it's not gonna stop us from investing here. I think if you've had a slowness of investment here and it's held back your growth, I do think the property taxes is a bigger problem. And I understand that's getting fixed, although it's happening slowly. Do I think this will impact the best investment over here? I don't know. I can't tell you. I will tell you, it's more than the amount that you've been talking about, because every time you inspect one of our buildings, we've got to have our people there. So, we've got their time also spent, and we're gonna have to spend, send extra people there to walk through. And we do have a number of project-based Section Eight, like North Avenue Tower. That's an elderly building, so it's inspected for that purpose. And then a lot of times, the lender walks through. If we have tax credits, then our finance authority walks through. Now, we got the city of Council Bluffs. It's potential that our residents who live in those properties could have four inspectors walk through in one year. And if I get a complaint from tenants, that's one of the first ones I get. What do you mean, I've got another inspection coming? They get frustrated with it. I will also tell you, landlord-tenant law in Iowa does require us to give them at least twenty-four hours' notice. So, we've got to have reasonable notice time, get the notices out to these larger properties, so everybody knows about it. So, anyway.
I did want to say, you know, first of all, I do appreciate you coming here tonight. And I do appreciate Selden. I know that Selden's providing, especially in our senior living, they're providing something we really need in our community. And I do appreciate that. And I appreciate that one of your main focuses is on the fees, because that's kind of been my point from the beginning, that to argue about whether or not a property should meet the minimum property codes is not a good argument with me. But the fees are a good argument. I wish that there was some way that this could be done without a fee. But that's not a potential. There's gonna be a cost involved. So, I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate that you're focusing on the actual fees being an issue for your company more so than meeting minimum property requirements.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny?
Yeah. Lenny Scaletta, Council Bluffs, Iowa 202531st Avenue. I said the last time here that I don't like the idea that you're concentrating just on on rental property, but not not people that are buying it. And, you know, they could very well, a house next to an apartment could start on fire because they don't have their fire extinguisher going. Again, and I agree with these people in Selden, from Selden there, and a lot of the things they say about opening up losses. But the main thing I want, I'm concerned about, or another thing that I'm concerned about, is chasing people out of here. But what, we're concentrating a lot of effort on that. And we've got a real high frame right here. And I understand that there's a lot of drugs running around this town. You know, are those drugs in the apartments? What if we got the druggies out that are falling asleep with a cigarette in their hand? And get those people out, get them arrested. What are we gonna hire, three inspectors? Why not hire three cops or something like that? And get the cry rate down. I mean, you know, I mean, that would significantly make the Council Bluffs better. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'm Megan Youngblood, twenty-one, Short Acres. I'm here today, kind of to reiterate the points that I had made at the last meeting. I still don't understand why Council Bluffs has decided to abandon the self-inspection program and switch to inspections done by city inspectors. I've asked, and I haven't really gotten a reason. I know that there are certain members of the community that feel that this ordinance would be beneficial. I would like to reiterate my position that I feel that it would not be beneficial. I'd spoken about it a few weeks ago. I don't like the government. I don't like the big brother factor. I know I had mentioned it before, but when a tenant rents a house from the landlord, they are entering into a two-party relationship. And so what you are doing is effectively terminating that. You are bringing a third party, which is the city government, into this equation. The tenants that are currently living in our rental houses and that are under leases, I don't think it is right for them to give up that expectation where they're in a lease with somebody and somebody else has to come in. And I understand that this is probably an ordinance that's going to pass. And from what I've read, there's quite a few points where the council has acquiesced to the landlords. And for that, I'm grateful. But I still, I still want you folks to know that what this is is government overreach. And I don't feel that when, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. When legislation is passed like this, all you do is open up a window for more and more and more legislation. Very seldom when something is passed is ever repealed. It's negated, mitigated, wording is changed, but it doesn't really get repealed. So, if this is a bad idea, which I feel that it is, I don't think that it'll ever be struck off the books. I guess that kind of makes me sad. In the past, rental houses, issues with rental houses have been dealt with either a tenant complaining or a neighbor complaining. Correct me if I'm wrong, but typically Maureen Eiler comes out, she makes a list of what you need to do, gives you a specific amount of time for corrections, and that's kind of where you go. If a tenant has a problem, we hope that they would call the landlord. The landlord fixes it, awesome. That's exactly how the tenant landlord relationship is supposed to go. If the landlord does not fix it, then you hope that the tenant's gonna go through the proper channels to get it fixed by sending a certified letter and going from there on. Or they can fix it themselves or they might move. Chances are, if it's a big enough issue to where the tenant is going to move, that landlord's going to have to fix that issue before somebody else will rent. And that's just good business sense. I did want to tell you that I, again, thank you for the work that are done, that has been done to this, specifically Section seventeen point oh nine point oh nine oh, seventeen point oh nine point one one oh. And there have been some changes to seventeen point oh nine point one hundred. I know, I think Mr. Angeroff had brought it up earlier about changing that wording on the smoke detectors from non-functioning to malfunctioning. I listened to what you said, Mr. Watson, and I do agree with Mr. Angeroff on that. I know there's a lot of legalese in there. I would like to see that changed. I think that is a, I think it's a good point. I know that this is gonna get passed. I guess I just feel sad. Sad for the city of Council Bluffs and sad for our tenants that they get somebody else involved in their lease. So, I'm gonna end soon. But what I would like everybody out there to know, especially the folks that are home watching this or will be watching this, is that under seventeen point oh nine point oh five oh, Section C and D, the building official can inspect your home at any time. If you refuse entry, what they're going to do is they're going to get a warrant, and they're going to come in your home. So, it's not too late to throw this out and start over. I appreciate all the hard work that everybody has done. I don't know if I made that clear my first time. But I still think this is silly. I just wanted everybody, everybody to know that.
Thank you.
If I may, I want to really thank you for your comments and in such a respectful manner. I did want to address just one point, that the ability of the city to inspect owner-occupied homes is in current law. We didn't add that. Now, it shows up in your, I just reproduce all the current language so you don't have to keep flipping back and forth. That was to make it easier to read. But if you go onto the city website or go where our link is to the municipal code, you'll see that's current law. And what that's based on is not regular inspection, just so you know. I know it's, like you say, it's a lot of legalese. That's if, like, the neighbor on a complaint basis or an emergency basement basis. For example, if your neighbor sees your house on fire, that's obviously a ridiculous example, but it helps prove my point of if they call to have the police or the fire department come, in some sense, they're violating your property rights in a very, very technical sense because they're inviting the government to get involved in your private property matters.
It's crazy. It's crazy. We even have to have those examples.
No, I agree.
I completely understand what you're trying to say.
That's, things are in there for like that, or like we see a bunch of mold coming out of the building, or rats, or raccoons running in and out. I mean, we're talking really bad things that are gonna be harmful to folks next door. That's, and it's already in there, and it's for that. We're definitely not, I agree with you, that government should not be and does not and will not, under this ordinance, be going around, you know, jackbooted into residences, checking if they've done the laundry, you know, or.
No. And that's, that's not what I meant to imply, if that's the impression that I gave. I just want all the renters to know, as they come into my office, I'm letting everybody know that I'm not gonna be the guy that's going out and inspecting your rental home anymore. It's gonna be John Q. City Official.
That's true.
And I don't, I can't tell the inspector to go on this day or at this time. It's essentially been taken out of my hands, Mr. Tenant, and I'm sorry for you, and it sucks, and I hope you don't move to Nebraska.
Well, on that, there will be no change in current practice where the staff will work with you as reasonably as they can to do it during business hours. I know there were some folks, to be fair, to the other positions, that wanted it to be done at different times. And I get that. It's just we're trying to keep that cost down. And if we had to run more than one shift, more than one, you know.
No, I appreciate that. You're getting into overtime.
Yeah. And so that's the tough thing, that's a tough thing there. But there will be, but we do put in there so that we don't have to worry about into the future. Right now, I think we've got a good building official who does work with people. And I've heard no one complain about communication.
No, she's great.
And so, but we can't always depend on that, can we? Because right now, the way it's written, they're not required to do that. And so that's one of those changes in here that definitely gets done what what you want. It requires it.
And I want to add a comment. You had mentioned to the people watching at home and the people here, the building official, the inspector is not going to unexpectedly come beating on the door wanting in.
Nope.
We do have a provision in seventeen point oh nine oh three oh, new Section Three, requiring them to establish a notification process. So, they will always have advance notice. They just don't get to say whether or not the people come in or not.
And I wouldn't.
They can, they.
I know.
They cannot allow you in.
And then there's gonna be a warrant.
Yeah, then you get.
Where it takes place, the building official would have to go to a judge and prove to a judge that.
It's just, it's sad. I think it's sad. And then I'm gonna have to, I think the gentleman from Selden had mentioned that, but they're gonna have to employ folks that are gonna have to go there and be with them. If I was a tenant in this town, which I am lucky enough to be a homeowner, if I was a tenant in this town and Billy, city official, shows up at my house and my landlord said that they were coming, I'd be hot. I would definitely, I don't even like the insurance guy coming out to my house. I know I would be upset. So, it's, it's sad that we're at this point in our, in our life.
I do want to share with you, though, that you might find it helpful. I don't know. But we did put something in there at the request of the Landlord Association that made sense, that you can call and ask for an inspection. So, if you've got a vacant property before you rent it again, you can, you can call your, the building department and inspector for your quadrant can come and do it at that time to be helpful, because really, that is the best time to look at it.
Absolutely.
So, we did put that in there. And I hope that's helpful at some time.
It will be helpful with the percentage of mine. My average tenant stays with me seven years. There's been tenants that I am now managing that started out with my grandma in the sixties. So, those are the folks that it's gonna bug. The folks that are there the longest and that they feel like that's their home. But anyway, thanks, folks, for listening to me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
John?
My name is John Blue. I live 3409 Avenue C here in Council Bluffs. I have too much time on my hands, so I'm gonna hand this down.
motion to adjourn.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. It's just so you can follow along with me. I have no skin in the game. I have no rental property. But in here, I got this, put this together. It says the city has placed in their new ordinance, a statement, and it's located in seventeen point oh nine point zero three zero in the new rendering, that says that each rental unit will be inspected every three years. So, I ask this question. If every rental unit has not, if every rental, if it does not get its inspection on time, and God forbid, there be a fire, and there was a fatality, does the city therefore assume some liability because it was not met on its own stated standard? In other words, if you hadn't got.
I'd be glad to answer that for you if that's a question. Yes, we do not assume the liability. So, if you look to the, I'm struggling off the top of my head, but there's a provision in here. It's already the case under state law that we don't. And there's some court cases, including one from a couple of years ago, that I can think of, last two or three years in the Supreme Court. But, but we expressly put that in there just so there's no doubt. Our goal is to try to make this, even though sometimes that makes it a little longer, it talks about how this isn't a guarantee, words to that effect. Off the top of my head, I don't remember the exact words. But, so, so, no.
All right. Anyway, the inspection load, now, I've got to tell you, I got a copy of the inspection. Anyway, the inspection load, now, I've got to tell you, I got a copy of the inspection code. And I'm not an inspector, but I inspected my house. And it took me a long time to do it, because I had to move stuff out away from the wall, and all that. So, but, anyway. The inspection load is great enough that is, that my scenario was, is a possibility, there could be a breakdown of not every apartment placed being inspected every three years. By the city's own numbers, if I got these right, there's eleven thousand rentals in Council Bluffs, Iowa.
That's correct.
Okay. There will be a total of three inspectors. You take eleven thousand properties and divide that by three inspectors, that's three thousand six hundred and sixty-six, number of inspections to be done a year, to meet the three-year commitment. Okay? Now, you take that three hundred, three thousand six hundred and sixty-six and divide it by three, that's your inspectors, that gives you one thousand two hundred and twenty-two, number of inspections to be done. Then, then you take two, two thousand eighty-
I've seen this math before on vacation, and so you get-
You know, I-
There's two hundred and fifty days, you're on vacation five days, and then-
Yeah.
Pretty soon, you owe me a day's vacation.
I just, I have too much time on my hands right now, so, um, I'd rather be mowing grass. But, um, anyway, you take the, two, two, two thousand eighty is the number of hours considered to be in a full working year. Okay? You take the two thousand eighty and divide that by an eight-hour day, that gives you two hundred and sixty, the number of days to be worked in a full year. Then you take ten days holidays, that takes you down to two hundred and fifty. This would be the number of days spent each year for each inspector, not counting paid time off or sick leave. You take that twelve, twelve hundred and twenty-two and divide that by two hundred and fifty, that's four point eight inspections done a day. It took me almost that just to do my house. So, but anyway. Uh, four point eight is the number of inspections that will be needed to be done in day in and day out, every working day of the year, by each inspector. Now, I've got some more questions here. Uh, this does not ta- take into account reinfections, inspections generated by complaint, time lost due to inclement weather, and we have that around here. Um, my question is, what would the city's plan be if there was to be a shortfall of completing these required inspections?
Well, I think they've addressed it several times, John, and I'm not going to speak on their, well, I guess I am. They, they, uh, one, don't know for sure that they can do it now. They've been trying to keep the fee as low as possible. I think the chief building official estimated they would need to do seven inspections a day, which probably factors in that vacation and sick time number. They're trying to do it, um, with technology, and so the inspector won't come back into the, the office. Um, he'll remotely file his report to the technician, and they're hiring two new inspectors and a technician. The technician would schedule the inspections and, and file the reports and, and do the data, and he thinks he can do that.
Okay.
It's yet to be seen.
And I guess I would like to just share this with you. I, I kind of use my own experience, because I am a real estate appraiser, so I do these inspections every day. And when I do a VA or an FHA inspection, I have to do pretty much what's on that form. I have to open and close windows, I have to go in attics, crawl spaces. I can do between five and seven a day in the summer months. Now, in the winter months, it gets dark, really. I can't see the roof. I try not to go out that late. Um, and I have to do after that another eight to twelve hours of work. That, the inspection's the shortest part of my appraisal process. And I'm knocking out, this year I will knock out about three hundred and fifty assignments. Now, some of those are more intense than others, but, you know, I figure if I can do that amount on my own, and have the additional eight to twelve hours of work that I have to do, then I don't have a lot of concerns that a qualified inspector can go out and do this many a day, since they're not going to be doing the paperwork part of it. So I have, I'm cautiously optimistic.
And then, I was just wondering, too, if there'd be overtime wages, inspectors, who's going to pay for that if this system, if they can't do the seven a day? You know, and if they're working eight-hour day, and they don't have lunch, they're doing it an hour? Each inspector in an hour? Okay. What's all they got? I just-
And the program is not meant as reformed to make a profit. And I appreciate, right now, it does run a surplus, because a lot of folks pay fifteen dollars and don't get inspected at all. It's almost like paying money to avoid being inspected, unless you're complained about, which is part of the problem, quite frankly. Um, so, under the reform, it will not make a profit, but no longer will it be subsidizing other things either. So, so there is some savings to be got. There's already one employee, and that's envisioned that position stays. So, that adds one more person to your calculations, by the way, and, and a lot of that, I don't think is necessarily made it out. So, I, I don't blame you for not knowing that. There's a lot of numbers, and not everything gets out. But, uh, I, I think you, you will be pleasantly surprised that no longer will it be subsidizing things, and things will go a little bit farther, further than, than, than you, uh, might be worried about. But if it doesn't, then we'll have to go up. That's, as part of being, paying for itself, it shouldn't pay for other things, even owner occupied, as it does right now. And, um, but, uh, if it's short, then it's going to have to, I, you know, I'm, I'm, first speaking for myself, I'm a great believer that, to the extent uh, there are regulations governing a business, the general taxpayer ought not to bear that, that, that business should. So that's why, that's why it's going to pay for itself.
Well, that's all I had.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, John. And, and I hope to be cautiously optimistic, too. If, if we, if we hit the number of houses that need to be inspected, we will be the first large city in Iowa to have done so.
Council Bluffs does a lot of things that they're first in the state on, so I'm optimistic that we'll show the rest of the state how it gets done.
John?
I'm Sean Lake. I live at seventeen four oh one Dandy Lane. Um, I'm a local landlord. My husband is a police officer for the city. He's also a licensed contractor. Um, we have met with a few of you, which I appreciate, and I see that, um, some of our issues that we've had have been addressed, um, in the amendments, but we are still not for the ordinance. Ben and I are not. Um, we strongly believe that this is government overreach, and it's not going to improve the conditions within our city. Um, we're really concerned about putting local landlords out of business and pushing our lowest and our poorest people, um, out of town. We feel like it's very discriminatory, um, and everyone needs and deserves a place to live. If landlords are cheating our current program, which is very easy to do, then please go after them, because our current program works if the city enforces the law. What we don't understand is why to give city officials more power if they are only going to partially enforce the laws. Um, so, if this is really about safety, then we have a bigger problem in town than our housing, and we have a major drug problem going on. Um, we actually went shopping for properties the other day, and we didn't buy anything. We usually buy something when we go out, but we didn't, because we don't know what this ordinance is going to do. Um, Ben's biggest concern is one-third out of plum for the foundation. How exactly is that going to be calculated? We were looking at a property in the South End that had some structural issues. But we just, we don't know exactly where that interpretation is going to go on some of these things. And so I, I don't know what we're going to do. I don't know if we're going to purchase a lot more homes in town, or if we're going to maybe just go outside of city limits, for now. So, we're, we're just worried, we're worried about the interpretation. And I do, I have friends that have, um, I don't rent, too, because they're a little too rough for my properties, but they have said, you know, I can afford five fifty a month, and I know my place isn't going to pass, where am I going to go? And I don't have a good answer for that. And I understand that's, she's rougher. That's what you're trying to address. She's not a rough person. She just lives a little rough. But, that's, that's what I'm concerned about with this ordinance. So, I mean, I appreciate that you guys have amended things for us, but again, we're still very concerned, and we are still not for the ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name's Leanne Hughes. I live at fourteen twenty North Twenty-first Street. I am not a landlord. However, I grew up in this town. I have been low income. Um, I've worked really hard to get where I am today, have not always been there. I have had some really crummy landlords. I have lived in some really poor conditions, and I have children now who are living in poor conditions, and I just think this ordinance is a great ordinance. And I, um, appreciate everything that you guys have done. I appreciate some of the landlords who have decided that they're not going to fight this, and they're going to work with you guys to iron some of the issues out, and, uh, try to make this a better place for the tenants. If, if somebody knows the house is not going to pass inspection, and the tenant's worried about having to move, there's just proof that our current system is not working. Thank you. I appreciate you guys very much. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carol Wood. I live at two four five Glen Ridge Circle. I'm a lifelong resident, and as an adult, I rented for about twenty years, and I've been a homeowner for twenty years, and I can tell you, renting was a lot more, um, uh, consistent with my style of life, you know? Taking care of all those things. I could turn that over to a landlord before, so I appreciate the landlords that really take care of their properties. And for the most part, uh, that's what I understand happens in Council Bluffs. Now, from a business perspective, I work with a population that maybe isn't quite as fortunate. A lot of old housing, or maybe incomes that do not support a standard of living that would be helpful. But when you look at what you're trying to do here, to have an objective of, of safer, healthier rental housing and quality of living for people, how can you argue with that? That is all we want. And I, you know, you've heard all the different sides of the issues for how to work it out, and that's going to happen. In my world, at Children's Square, it's how are we going to deal with that vulnerable population as the transition is made? And fortunately, we're in a community that recognizes that there will people that maybe, uh, lose their houses, or there will be landlords that can't continue. Um, but there are the bigger issues that we have to deal with, uh, to build that safety net for those people in the interim. So your implementation date, and when you look at, at putting that into effect, is important, and I understand it won't be right away. It may be summer. Um, so in the cold weather, if some of the young people that we work with lose their housing, uh, because of changes, we're in a position maybe where we can deal with that. I have some examples, um, and I'm a little hesitant to share them, because these folks are vulnerable. But what they say is that, um, you know, they, they don't have much income. And what they can afford maybe is housing that is infested, or repairs aren't made. But they put up with that, because the landlords are also flexible, and when their rent is late. And, um, the landlords that maybe do keep their homes in good repair are doing credit checks, and these young people aren't passing those. So there's a, there's a lot of issues like that, uh, that people need to deal with. That's not what you're after, those kinds of things. That's what our business is to look at. And I'm glad to be in a community that recognizes that this is a, an issue that's going to take much more than just looking at housing. It's going to take education. It's going to be living wages. It's going to be how do we improve our community overall? And we need to recognize that it's not just this piece. I really do appreciate the time you have taken to hear the other sides. I'm much more informed. And I really know and trust that we'll deal with these big issues that are facing us in our community. So thank you, and I'm all for safe, um, housing, and improving the quality of life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Gumm, three thirty-three Lawton Terrace. Um, I live in Lincoln Fairview Neighborhoods Association, and I support the ordinance. I live in an older neighborhood, historic neighborhood, downtown neighborhood. We have a lot of older houses. We have some rental property. And maybe everybody here is a good landlord, but I have seen a lot of non-good landlords, you know, in my neighborhood. And I think if there were inspections and, and people were more up to code, they'd have better renters. The renters would be better neighbors. It'd be better for the neighborhood. They would have better neighbors, and everybody deserves to be in a good neighborhood, and the neighborhood deserves to have good renters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're up, ma'am.
Hey, I didn't get a chance to speak last time, because I just, I didn't really think that there was much I could add to the conversation.
Name and address for the record, sorry.
Sarah Haldeman. I live at twenty-seven oh one Sixth Avenue. Um, and I actually just recently moved there. I moved there, uh, November first. So that's the first time, actually, I haven't been with a rental company. Before this, I lived at Park Wild Apartments and Highclere Apartments, both of which were excellent facilities, which I very much enjoyed. So this is kind of my first, uh, dip into the gene pool, you might say. But I just wanted to say that, um, I personally, I'm not in support of this ordinance, and I think that partially it is because I, as a renter, feel that my, my rights are going to be violated, because, you know what? My mom and dad, they don't have to have an inspector come out to their house and pull furniture away from the walls and dig through to make sure everything is just right. But I have to, just because I choose to rent. Because, you know, I'm young. I'm still building up my future, my life. I'm working hard, but I don't have the means. I don't have the, the ability to buy a house right now. So what are my options, then? I either have to live in an apartment complex or with my parents. That's not a very great option, because right now, I have a yard. I love that yard. I haven't had a yard in three years, and that was one of the primary reasons why I moved. It's because there's, there's an option now where I can live in a house. That's great. I also don't feel like this is a great thing for my landlady. She's been working here, in Council Bluffs, since the nineties. She owns two properties, Free and Clear, and she is a wonderful landlady. Whenever I first called her, she was bright and cheery, and she said, "I will be the best landlady you've ever had." And I'm like, I've never had a landlady before, but I'm sure you will be. And she has, she's very responsive whenever I have any issues, and she lets me, actually, if, because I have family who are in the construction business, she's like, "If you have things that you want to do to update the property and fix it, go ahead, and I'll take it off your rent." Now, that is probably an example of one of the best landlords out there. And of course, there is the opposite side of that, which we all know and love. But you know what? As a renter, whenever I was out there looking at properties, I was able to pick out which ones I wasn't too thrilled about. I was like, you know what? This landlord doesn't seem like they'll be responsive, responsive. This one just, you know, bombed for a bunch of fleas in their house, and I'm like, I know that was the problem with the other renters, but I don't like that idea at all. So there's a level of discernment that I have, as a renter, have, when I'm going to pick a property. I don't think it's been taken into the, in equa- the equation here at all. We're talking about this nebulous force, like renters and landlords are just people that happen to collide into each other, and then things happen. And then, you know, renters just get stuck in these awful situations, and there's nothing they can do to get out of it. And yet, if I have a problem with my landlady, and she is not responsive, what do I do? I can actually call you guys. There are avenues in place for me to try, to try and fix that. So, my question is, why are we trying to overburden the system that is in place? I don't understand that, and I have not yet heard the horror stories that would make this a reasonable effort. And I understand that there has been a lot of work put into it, and personally, whenever I put a lot of work into a project, I really hate to drop it, even if i- it starts to show signs of weakness. And I think this does show signs of weakness, because so far, I'm hearing a large cost, and it's not just the cost of the fees, but it's also the cost of updating the property. It's a really big deal, because, especially if you guys do it the same way a lot of different places do it, a lot of government agencies do it, you have to do things a certain way with certain contractors. You can't do the work yourself, and it just adds up. I just would ask you guys, consider that maybe there are some things that need to be changed in the current system, and we should address those. I heard some, some actually great things in this ordinance that I'm like, yes. I heard some actually great things in this ordinance that I'm like, "Yes, that is a fantastic piece." I didn't write them down because my paper was already full. But there were several things, I'm like, "Yeah, we need to update that piece, we need to make that more clear for the safety of everyone." And for, you know, making sure that whenever we have relations with each other, whenever I, as a citizen, and you, as the government, come in and we come into contact, that there are clear ways that we act with each other. I don't think that this does that. I think that it goes far beyond it, and I think it is too much. And honestly, I'm still trying to get over my college debt. I'm still trying to build up a life. I really am trying. And the fact is, my landlady, I don't know if the place is up to snuff. I think it is, I like it, it works well for me. But I'm worried that if this passes, she could eventually lose it, or maybe just give it up. Now I'd have to move. And where would I move? I don't know. If you guys have anything, that's all I wanted to say, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to get up and say a couple things, from our standpoint in the fire department. I, just to reiterate what you just said about why we're doing this, the truth is, what we are doing is not working. I would encourage all of the citizens that want to stop by the fire station and talk to some firemen that go out into these buildings. They will tell you the exact same thing. Matter of fact, if you walked across the street right now and asked those firemen what their worst nightmare is, they'd point you right down the street to some of the houses on South Ave. And so that's really why this has come to somewhat, to here today. And it's because of the bad landlords. The other issue is, believe it or not, some people in this town don't really have a voice. And I've dealt with landlords in this community where tenants have complained, and then they get beat down by their landlord, or their landlord basically threatens eviction to them, and they really don't have anywhere else to go. And that's kind of why we're here. This is the only industry in this city that you can be in and not have an inspection. And for the people from Selden, they're inspected annually by the Fire Marshal's Office. At least their common hallways are, they are very squared away, they were built recently. I think they have sprinklers because the fire code requires them to have sprinklers. But the fact is, it's the only business you can be in, in this town, that you don't ever have a check and a balance, and government's about that. How do we, you know, if we make a rule but we don't ever check it to make sure you're following it, that's an issue, and that's kind of where we're at and why we change this. And I think if you look through all the ordinances, we have changed, and Councilman White and Councilman Watson have worked very hard to try to make this work for everybody. And I hope it works, you know, I said from the very beginning, either this is going to be the best thing that we ever did for our community, or it's going to be a huge headache. And I'm confident that, and I wish Steve was here tonight. I think Building Official Carmichael, he and his inspectors will do a fantastic job, and I'm hoping that this will all work, and I encourage you guys to support it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Mike?
Hi, Mike Alfred, 24522, Rochfield Loop. The only thing I have to address, and I think it was brought up from Children's Square, I don't know if we know how big the problem is, I don't think anyone's done a study to say we have this many subpar units in council bluffs. And so I guess I'm speaking more towards the implementation if it does pass, because I don't know that there's been enough time set aside to put a safety net out there for those people that are going to be displaced. And I'm sure there are going to be some, and there are organizations within the community that would like to help in that respect for landlords who want to move in that direction. But if we're talking about, you know, if there's 500 units that are not up to code, and you're doing this within, by starting this summer, will there be enough time for those people to make those adjustments? So I guess what I'm asking is that if the council does pass this resolution, that you allow enough time for those landlords who want to get into compliance to have the ability to seek out ways to do that, whether that's private, public funding, whatever. What we don't want to see, we want to see safe, affordable housing. We don't want to see people out on the streets that don't have any place to live right now.
If I may, excellent point, sir. The date we're looking at is an August 1st implementation date, because obviously this year, it's too late, we can't, unless we invent time travel, of course, people can't register last December, and the program wasn't up and running January 1st. It takes time to hire the staff and to train them and to do things right, and for other folks for the reasons you mentioned. Though that also points out the gravity of the problem that if the current system was working, then there shouldn't be any need for all these updates, if everybody's being accurate and honest about it. But I appreciate that this will affect people, there are a lot of housing trusts. There's actually quite a bit of funding available for landlords. And through this process, I've learned a lot about this issue and learned, I didn't know of these programs, they probably didn't either. And part of our job and part of others is to make that more widely known. As part of this, there's also going to be a training program, voluntary, not going to cost a thing, where landlords can come in and they can proactively go to a class to learn what the standards will be. So not only will they be given all the rules and writing, and what's in, which isn't necessarily what happens now, and what's in writing will be what they exactly inspect, which isn't always the case right now. There's going to be a voluntary class in place to help them. Plus, we'll help steer them towards the various funding sources. And as Carol Wood mentioned, there are other... We are blessed in this community with a large number, for our size, we're blessed with a large number of support social service programs that are funded. Every program always needs more money, and I'm not being flip about that. There's always more need than there is resources. But we are blessed in many ways because we have a lot more than a lot of other places. And so I have no doubt as part of this, it's certainly not our goal to have folks up in the street, but that begs the question that if the place is so bad, and we're talking minimum standards here, it's not the Taj Mahal, we're talking the toilet flushes, you have water, there's not a hole in the exterior wall. We're talking very basic things, we're not talking about whether the carpet is this year or last year, you know? It's nothing like that. Folks in that position would love to have that kind of problem, you know? So that just shows how bad it is. And I personally think that with all those resources available, I appreciate there are a large number of people on the other side of this who genuinely believe this is going to hurt people. But I think saying, "Let's leave people where they are, no matter how bad it is, because that's all they can get," just isn't good enough for our community.
I agree with what you're saying. I guess what I'm thinking about is, if we're talking seven months before this implementation, that does not, and you're talking about all the information that needs to get out to landlords for them to get up to speed, because in some of the positions that I hold, I'm starting to get calls from those people. And then you're talking about implementing this now going into fall, which means that if there are people displaced, most likely it will start in winter. And so you're looking at, I guess, what I'm saying is, be mindful of that as you go into this fall and doing that, so that we minimize the impact, because again, there's a lot of people who want to do it right. There are people like Selden, if they were out of compliance, they could dig into their pockets and do it. There's a lot of individuals who own rental properties that may have to seek out some other funding, and working with grants or loans, you know it takes time. Those cannot be done in thirty days in a lot of cases, at least under the current programs. So that's...
That's the goal, I mean, because if we don't do that, things don't get better. And you're right, there are a lot of pieces, and as Carol Wood again, quoting her, I think she said a lot of similar good points on that issue. And rest assured, our goal is not to put people out in the street. It's, we have one piece we directly control, and that's this one. And it's not that we don't care about the others, and I can assure you, we do, and we will do everything we can to make sure that this is taken care of. So I very much appreciate your concerns, thank you, sir.
Mike, just a couple of things I wanted to let you know, as we did add the wording for the trusts.
Oh, thank you.
So that's been taken care of, and there are extra copies, if you don't have one, I can get you one, so you'll see how we took care of that. And then, the other thing is, is that we, Councilman Ringenberg brought an amendment that we'll be adding, that the only time renters are going to have to leave a property is if it gets placarded. And that has been better defined by his amendment, that that is going to be when the House meets the dangerous home standards. So even if there's a lot of repairs that have to be done, as long as it's not dangerous to the tenants, they're not going to have to move out while those repairs are being done. So, yeah, I have concerns, I think there'll probably be some, you're right, and we need to make sure to get the information out there. But it's not going to be every property that has repairs is going to have to have a tenant move out. I don't think we're going to have that many of those. Maybe some repairs, but they could still stay there, so.
I just wanted to add, I had wanted to say that I thought that was an excellent addition, that made the ordinance that much stronger by Councilmember Ringenberg, and so I appreciate it.
We just wanted to allow us to say what we mean and what we mean what we say, right? Is that what you said earlier?
That is my goal, yes.
Thanks.
All right. Anybody from the council?
We need to make a motion, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
We have to make a motion that would include what you're adding today.
I move, to move to fourth reading. The document I've handed to the clerk, which incorporates the changes that have been handed out in the public forum with two additions, the two sections that Councilmember Ringenberg greatly improved on, namely, the first one dealing with pest extermination, the definition of infestation specifically, and the second one dealing with, as my colleague, Councilmember White, just mentioned, when a property is placarded. Oh, excuse me, and adding a clause as to the effective date, August 1st, 2015. Thank you.
I would second that motion.
All right, this is their discussion, though. This incorporates all the other amendments that you had offered as well?
Yes, sir. I just want to say that, you know, I think it's important, especially folks at home, to know that this has been a long process involving a lot of people, at times very spirited debate, but good faith debate. And I'm really glad, actually, believe it or not, to see it. I like seeing people involved. And it's important to know that this reform makes over two dozen reasonable changes to the current inspection standards, not, these aren't all new. In fact, any changes actually make the current standards that landlords are currently swearing to on self-inspection forms annually that they're following. It makes them more reasonable, that is, less strict. Now, those weren't in, that's, it's true, those weren't in the original proposal. The only thing we were going to do originally, Councilmember Wyatt and I, was to go from self-inspection to regular city inspections of rentals. That was it, but a lot of landlords came to us with unrelated, though reasonable, concerns about current inspection standards themselves that they're currently following. And we made those changes. This is a reasonable compromise, it increases safety, and you know, some folks have mentioned that under current law, excuse me, we could just raise the fees to cover the costs of several more spot inspections. That's true, we could do that, that's correct. However, if we did that, those two dozen other changes that make the current standards more reasonable and far more favorable to landlords wouldn't be included. And the rules have to be applied to everyone, you know, a uniform inspection process for all residential rental properties, because we can't just decide to pick and choose which landlords that we think might be bad, you know? It's got to be an equal process, now, with the results based on individual compliance with that process. So the people not following the universal rules will, of course, receive far more, they will receive the violations, as it should be. And you know, the recent example of our neighbor to the west makes the importance of having a uniform process clear. And you know, the vast majority of landlords, again, who have, I genuinely believe, have actually been following the current rules, and I want to make that very clear, will find that their burden has been greatly lessened and made much more reasonable by this reform. And the point is to increase public safety in those minority of cases where the law is being said to be followed, but is not. And in all cases, to make the inspection standards more reasonable than they would be without this reform. And in closing, I've been consistently in favor of this reform to increase public safety in our community, and I will wholeheartedly continue to vote in favor of reform.
Anyone else?
I just want to say, I've been involved in city government for nineteen years. I have not seen the effort put into a single ordinance that's been put into this. And I think an effort to try and craft an ordinance that is workable for the majority of people, no ordinance is workable for all, but really have done yeoman's work on listening and incorporating ideas, and should be commended for that, I think. But that said, all those, anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
That's on the amendment, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, on the amendment, sorry, that is aye.
Oh. Yeah, aye.
All right. The ordinance as amended. Is there a motion? Do we need a motion, we got a motion?
I think I made it, I hope.
Yeah, you made a motion to pass it, too.
Yeah.
Third, or, excuse me, fourth, excuse me.
Yeah, all right. Any discussion on that?
The public hearing is closed, and it goes to a fourth reading, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Ordnance on third reading, ordinance 6221, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.27.020B by rezoning all of that part of the southeast quarter, southeast quarter of section 10-74-44, and that part of the northeast quarter, northeast quarter of section 15-74-44, lying north of Veterans Memorial Highway Right-Away, and that part of the southwest quarter, southwest quarter of section 11-74-44, lying west of the South 24th Street Right-Away and north of Veterans Memorial Highway Right-Away. Propose Lot 1, South 24th Street and Highway 275 Industrial from A2 Parks Estates and Agricultural District to I-1 Light Industrial District as defined in chapter 15.20.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Ordnance 6222, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in section 15.27.020B by rezoning the northerly half of the property at 240 Kenmore Avenue, described as that part of the Outlaw 1, Keyline Home Place, adjacent to the north half of Lot 12, Auditor subdivision of Lots 13, 16, and 14, Auditor subdivision of the southwest quarter, northeast quarter of section 30-75-43, are fully described in Book 102, page 8140 of the Potawatomi County Recorder's Office, from C2 Commercial District to R1 Single Family Residential District as defined in chapter 15.08B.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Ordnance 6223, amending chapter 15.20, I-1 Light Industrial District by amending section 15.20.050, site development regulations relative to the maximum height allowable.
Motion to approve.
Second. Did we have some amendments work on that?
Yeah, I'd like to amend it to clarifying that the motion would be 150 feet inclusive of electrical, et cetera, equipment.
Maximum height of 150 feet.
Maximum height 150, yes.
I would second that.
And because it's, even though I still oppose the ordinance in chief, I believe, especially since I believe it will pass, that this clarifying amendment's very, very helpful, and so I will support it.
All right. Any more discussion? Motion on the amendment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. And now a motion for the ordinance as amended. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
And that was four to one, for those keeping track at home. Resolutions?
Resolution 15-09, authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation for the all-town sign replacement program.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-10, authorizing the mayor to execute an offer-to-buy to the Iowa Department of Transportation for the purchase of a patent of easement in connection with the council plus levy system.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-11, approving change order number one for the Mesquite Creek North Sewer relocation, adding an estimated $703,625 to the contract amount.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-12, authorizing the mayor to sign an Iowa West Foundation Initiative Agreement, which provides financial assistance for the planning, design, and construction of Phase Two of Rivers Edge Park.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion.
This, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Oh, thank you. There have been some folks who've asked me what piece of ground we're talking about. And so it's basically, it's in between the current park, that is, those levees with the natural grass where you can, or the stair step, the kind of a natural amphitheater, I guess. And we've talked about some development occurring. It's in between. It's some additional, parkland's the wrong term, but it's certainly some significant aesthetic improvements to the public areas of the park area, just so folks know what we're talking about.
Along that similar line, as I, so I've read the staff package on this, Iowa West Foundation has offered $850,000. And in turn, the city is obligated to match that amount of money for a number of purposes. And you kind of have to read into the agreement to see all those purposes. And one of those is the creation of a comprehensive plan that will be used to solicit additional funding from other parties, including the City of Council Plus, Potawatomi County, State of Iowa, and it goes on. So if I'm reading this correctly, we are contributing money, we're matching money to something that will develop plans that will enable them to come back and request more money. And so I just wanted to get that out there, that the purposes on this are many. And we need to be clear about where this money is going and what we expect to be developed in the future.
And it would be a plan that then could go to multiple sources, like Hanifin Park did initially, Division Iowa, to Iowa West Foundation Omaha Foundations. Without a plan, you can't solicit money, and so it's the first step.
Could I ask a process question, Mr. Mayor? The, if we, if we don't list ourselves in that, in that plan, then if we ever wanted to kick in money to the next phase, we really couldn't.
They prohibit it, no.
But it wouldn't be expressly saying our intent now that we intend to pay towards it. Isn't that really, we're not going to try to convince ourselves to pay money.
I think the match is probably a requirement, so.
I see.
Yeah.
And I think, again, you know, we've been doing a lot more discussion about the things that are happening in the West End, and I'm very excited to see some of these projects. I believe that it's high time. The West End is in a perfect position for development and to start seeing some of the renovations that have needed to take place for years. So I'm, this is just one more area that I'm just super excited to see the West End prosper in and become a better place to live for everyone there.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Nay.
Madam Clerk?
Resolution 15-13, increasing the authorized strength of the Councilless Fire Department from 100 to 107.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Could we here, just briefly, so that folks who may have not heard earlier, Fire Chief James has a eminently reasonable explanation of the request.
Thank you. Well, first, just a little background on this. This will be the first authorized strength change for the fire department since 2002. A little history, in 1996, we had 114 firefighters. We ran about 5,000, 6,000 runs. Today, we have 100 firemen. We're asking to go to 107, and we run over 8,000 runs. We don't really look at run numbers, per se, to decide when we need an increase in staffing. And just to be clear, this isn't really an increase of the number of firemen that will be at work on a daily basis, per se. This doesn't change our minimum manning. Our minimum manning will remain 28. What this really does is, since 2002, when we reduced our staffing slowly, and in 2002, it was down to 100 authorized strength, the idea was that we would save money by paying overtime rather than have employees. And at the time, it probably made sense. Healthcare costs were driving up, pension costs were up some. And no one really knew where we were going to end up on the benefit package side of firemen. In the last two years, we've really got in the mud on what causes vacancies in the fire department, why are people missing work, you know, all the different things, whether it's military leave. And we've really tracked where we're going and what that costs. And what we've found is, it's no longer cheaper to pay the overtime than it is to have the personnel. Not only that, it's, you know, depending on what you want to judge of overtime, it's, you know, $19 a day, maybe cheaper on the most conservative end. The fact is, the wear and tear on the personnel and the amount of overtime hours that they're working in busy month has some, and I think national studies will show you that the more overtime people work, the more likely they are to become injured in the line of duty. So that's kind of where we're at. The only addition to the budget actually is the inspector in the Fire Marshal's office, and that's something that's needed to be done for years. It has to do with just pure divisional labor in the office. We ask a lot of those individuals in there, and we've always kind of been understaffed, and we didn't have good divisional labor. We have guys that are doing fire investigations, and then they're also doing inspections and new construction. And their workload is very substantial. And what happens is, when you don't divide that labor up, we'll get three fires, and then all three of them are working on fire investigations, and none are doing inspections, and we get behind. Or we get a busy run in the summer where we have a lot of fires, and then there's a lot of new construction going on, very difficult to keep up. The other thing is, we've never covered vacancies in that. So when those guys go on vacation, when we were talking about inspections earlier, there's about 2,200 commercial occupancies in Council Plus. We try to get to them annually. It doesn't always happen. We're not too far behind on that. You break that down to how many inspections there are. And if you don't cover their vacancy, or at least have an extra guy to maybe help out, they, it's a compound problem. They probably get two weeks vacation, three weeks vacation. And in those three weeks, those inspection numbers don't stop, so. And to be honest, I mean, we could have an inspector just do new construction. I mean, with the amount of new construction we're seeing in the city, as far as on the commercial side, where we have some impact, a lot of land review and suppression systems, we could have a guy literally probably at one project in the city almost every day.
So in some ways, a nice problem to have.
Yes, it is, yeah. And we're happy to have it.
Obviously, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys, for your consideration.
Appreciate all the in-depth manpower analysis on your part.
Any comments from the council? Can you give us your name and address, Bruce?
Bruce Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue. This is a request, Mr. James. Out of 106 or 107, really, one of those is going to become an inspector, right?
Correct.
Right. That's what I wanted to know, like that.
One.
Will be promoted to an inspector.
Possibly. There will be an inspector put in place.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yep.
Because I, that's what I was reading in the paper, and it didn't say authorize for 107, one will be a fire inspector. That's what, and we do need more inspectors in our fire department.
Anything from the council?
Uh, no.
Police appreciation week, last week.
We need to vote, we need to...
Yeah, we need to vote.
We need, I just was gonna...
Thank you.
I thought you were moving on.
We're voting up for the election three years from now. And for those to the fire department also, so. We do need, we do need a vote. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Permits and cancellations?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. And any citizens requesting to be heard?
Unreceived.
Anyone from the audience? Any other business from the council?
I just, oh, I'm sorry, please.
I'm sorry, you go ahead.
I just wanted to mention briefly, some folks may have seen the article in the paper, that the mayor has done a fabulous job of behind-the-scenes work helping to increase and restore our holiday lighting in our community. And I'm grateful that he's appointed me chair of a committee of residents. And I'm grateful to him for suggesting that it be community-based. So a lot of residents have applied, have said that they'll be on the committee. It's not that formal. And our first meeting is this Thursday night at 7:00 at my council office, which is Suite 414, the fourth floor of the Park Building, at 500 Willow, just across Willow Avenue from City Hall. And if there's anyone else who'd like to be a part of trying to see what we can do to fulfill the mayor's charge of having the folks do this instead of government doing it to restore our holiday lights, I encourage you to become a part of it. Or contact the mayor's office, if you, or me, if you have any other questions.
And we will take donations.
Yes, we'll take money. And, you know, the city, of course, if you donate to the city, it's tax deductible. That's really important.
Unfortunately, he's already left, and I didn't get to do this at the last meeting. Our finance director, Art Hill, retired at January 2nd. And I just want to express my thanks. Since I've been on the council, as you can imagine, a whole lot of what we do has to do with finance. And without Art's assistance and his ability to do a finance report in a manner that I can understand and also to explain when we're dealing with bond issues, he's very patient. He's always, he was always available. And he saved the city a tremendous amount of money. And I just want to publicly thank him for the efforts that he has given the city over the years.
Finance director appreciation week.
If I could, I'm going to self-identify something here. And that is, when we took the second vote on item 5C, that's the Housing Inspection Ordinance, we took that second vote, I thought that we were actually voting on whether or not we were going to send this to a fourth reading, which we are. But I just wanted to make sure that was, made apparent that I did not intend to vote in favor of the overall passage of that ordinance. I still feel that overall, it's not the appropriate thing to do for the city. And I apologize for that faux pas, but just wanted to make sure that my intent was clear. Thank you.
Dick, can we amend that?
Did you, what, just your vote on it?
Yeah. He was explaining his rationale. He didn't change his vote.
And I'm, just wanted to say, I was really disappointed because I did catch that you voted in favor of it. And we had actually addressed every single issue, adopted every one of your amendments, and you had said from the very, very beginning that as long as it wasn't onerous, that you believed we needed this program if it was done in the right way. And considering we've made every change that you've asked for, every change that the landlords asked for, when I heard your vote in favor, I was so pleased because I thought we finally got there. You know, we got to that program. So I'm really disappointed. I truly believe that Councilman Ringenberg would vote in favor of it once we got it in a manner that he had indicated would bring his vote, for a yes vote, so.
Well, no, I, no, that's a misunderstanding. No, we haven't by any stretch of the means gotten there. And when we started this process, it was, it took us a long time, this much paper, to get to where we are now, so.
Are there amendments that you need, were there amendments that you still needed that you didn't bring forward that would have made you know that this was a program you could vote in favor for? Because you haven't brought it, anything you brought, we added. I'm surprised.
No, I appreciate the efforts to try and take some of the bad aspects out of this particular ordinance.
So really, you just were never going to...
But I do not believe that overall, this is the best approach for the city.
Okay, so in the beginning, when you said you could, if it were changed, it was, you, there's really nothing we could do that you...
Oh, yes, there was.
Oh, okay.
That was rejected.
Oh, was that the HUD HQVs?
Yes.
Okay, well, I think the landlords and the...
Among other things, that would have been a starting point.
Okay, all right. Well, at least I understand that. Thank you.
All right, anything else from the council? Word, Your...
The landlord's probably dying.
You should be able...
At Councilless Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity-safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology, because saving you time saves you money.
At Councilless Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Councilless Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.